Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
Thank you. Welcome. Could I have a motion to open the October 15th, 2024 public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Sag Harbor, New York?
I move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Could I also, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections or anything? I gave Kerry a bunch of just little typos.
No, I figured you got this.
Okay. But I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September, I don't know what meeting was, I'm sorry. September 17th meeting, zoning board.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Just for everyone's information, tonight we'll also be implementing our procedural resolution, which allows applicants 10 minutes to speak and then the public three minutes to speak. And additional time can be granted if discretion of the board. Next on the agenda is correspondence requiring action, which is for 11 Henry Street for a one-year extension of their ZBA approval from January 2023. Could I have a motion to approve the one-year extension requested?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have one announcement. If you're interested in decision for 41 Redwood Road, 26 Cove Road, that application has been withdrawn, so there will be no decision. They've withdrawn the application. Okay, now we will move to old business. And first on the agenda is 63 Main Street.
The applicant is here at the moment, so.
Okay, so we'll just. Shall we adjourn it to later? Do I need to do anything or just?
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll call it later, okay. Next on the agenda is 57 Palmer Terrace, and they have requested an adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn 57 Palmer Terrace to?
So move.
Uh, wait a minute, to the?
November.
Yeah, I, what date? Yeah.
Date?
Yeah.
It's like it's the 19th.
The 19th of November meeting.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, next on the agenda is 37 Johns Street. Great. Good evening.
Thank you, I was Craig from Cleveland, D.C. We're the owner of 37 Johns Street. He's definitely on the roof pool and studio, both of which partially are in the required front yard. The board requested that we update this plan to spot elevations, first floor elevations, full fence, full equipment, and to his own name, so we have hedging on the Columbia Street side. I would get updated the plan submitted to the board for review.
Great, thank you. Um, the only comment that I had is that the pyramid drawings are still not correct. The, I mean, if you want to approach, I'll show you what the. The, they didn't do it from all four sides, because it's, there's pyramid violation this way and this way, from the south and the east. And he didn't draw it from this direction.
So this, but there's spot elevation that shows further down, so you don't need it on that.
No, he went this way, but it didn't go this way. He just did this one elevation. He didn't do this one, which would be back here.
Okay, I was gonna own this.
See?
This property line.
From that property line to.
But if it's 15 feet, he'll draw it, but if it's.
No, well, I've, so. The other thing is that he didn't show the correct. That one is not 14.3, it's 13.3. Look, if you look at the survey.
Oh, not sure, right?
Yeah, or that. And see, the spot elevations corresponding, that one is 14.4, that one's 13.8, that one's 13.6, and that's 14.3. So they weren't really shown. It, what happens is you end up with a very tiny bit of violation, I'm guessing. What you could do to get out of it is to simply move this.
Scoot it over.
Scoot it over a little bit, and you could even scoot it over that way a little bit.
Okay, I'll talk to the architect too.
You know, even if you do probably between six inches to a foot, which isn't going to matter on the property, you, you won't have any pyramid violation.
Okay, so you're completing a point one inch here because it's point one inch higher.
No, 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 it's, it's from here to 14, you see, it's, it's from that point. That's where the angle starts. It doesn't, these don't, numbers don't matter to us. It's these numbers. And actually, interestingly enough, the grade here at 14.9 is higher than the floor. Which is a little bit odd.
Yeah, they're gonna be regrading.
Okay.
They're gonna be having to lower it a little, because there's a little bit of hill.
Right, right.
How they're gonna be really disturbing the site anyway with the.
We, but we don't really care about that. The only thing we care about is the first floor elevation and, and those corresponding corners. But if you simply move, you can tell how close it is. If you simply moved the structure a little bit more away from the property line, you won't have this issue. So, I don't know, Val, did you have anything else to add? Because I know you noticed it also.
Right, so, no, just more spot elevations to reference where the pyramid's coming from.
Along the.
It'd be the east elevation on the top right of the drawing, and that's where he has, there's a 13.4 and 13.6. That's where the pyramid, which a little bit, the line would come from a lower point, and it's going to clip the building. So what Mr. Chairman had said to move this building a little bit closer in, and you'll avoid the infraction.
Okay. Yeah.
I think that's the simplest solution. And I don't know, do, does anyone have a problem with the dimension from the street being 39.5 instead of 40? I don't think that that's going to matter, it's still in the front yard. Right, yes, so I think your simplest solution here is just to scoot the building over, because it doesn't line up with anything anyway. And then you won't have a pyramid violation, right?
And it doesn't look like we need to re-notice anything, because it's just for the, the structure in the front yard. So can we just submit revised plans showing it on the chairman? Sure. And it doesn't need to be re-notice, yeah, it doesn't specify. Like how much?
Right, no, I don't, no, it doesn't really specify anything. So, um, should we, would we be able to do, have you write a decision that we can just, based on getting a survey showing the?
The next week.
Okay, great. So, uh, do you have anything else to add? Nope. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to 37 Johns Street? Anyone on Zoom? Any questions from the board?
No. None.
Okay. Um, could I have a motion to close public hearing for 37 Johns Street?
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Um, I don't have a problem with this even scooting the building over a little to avoid the pyramid violation.
No, I don't.
Anyone else?
I don't.
Any comments?
No, the, uh, the roadside edge of pavement is 18 feet, and that's a mitigating factor in terms of a little bit closer to.
Right, right, that's right.
No comment.
Uh, Damon, do you have anything? Uh, Damon, do you have anything to add?
No, pretty simple.
Okay, could I have a motion to, um, direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for thirty-seven Johns Street?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much. Great. Next on the agenda is one fifty-two Division Street, and they have requested an adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn one fifty-two Division Street?
So move.
To the, I'm sorry, nineteen, uh, November meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And the next one on the agenda is two or three Madison Street, and they have also requested an adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn two or three Madison Street to the November nineteenth meeting?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
We also adjourn the first.
No, um.
It'd be re-noticed.
Wait, sixty?
Sixty-three me, it has to be re-noticed, so it has to be adjourned.
Okay, so, could I have a motion, um, to adjourn sixty-three Main Street to our nineteen November meeting?
Move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Hey. That is the end of old business. Now onto new business. And first on the agenda is nineteen Williams Street. So how much, someone here to speak to nineteen Williams Street? Yes, I will. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for nineteen Williams Street?
I'll make a motion to open.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, uh, could you state your name and address for the record?
Anthony Rivers Law, sixteen Union Street, Sag Harbor.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you, you may proceed.
Great, so. Okay, so what we have here is a, um, a distinct, uh, one-story single-family house on William Street. It, it is approximately seven things or fifty-three square feet, uh, existing. It is, um, it is in the historic district, but it is not, it is, it's not considered a contributing historic, uh, building. Um, it has not had very much work done on, on it over time. It is recently, I don't know, maybe five, ten years ago, it had a little bit of a cosmetic makeover, but no substantial improvements. Um, so the project here entails adding a second story and a rear, rear addition, uh, to this structure, um, which is to make, um, to expand the living space. Uh, the new living space will be, uh, the new GFA will be approximately sixteen hundred, um, square feet. So, um, okay, so you can see there, we've got our four plans, um, the first floor and a proposed, um, second floor, which will be a half-story with, uh, dormers. So we are requesting here, we're, uh, requesting, um, sky plane, um, relief. We're requesting, um, rear yard, uh, relief of, uh, twelve feet where eighteen is required. Uh, one thing that's interesting about this property, most Sag Harbor properties in the historic district are deeper than they are wide. This one is actually wider than it is deep, so I think this is the first time I have ever had the three tenths rule, um, come into play, but it does in, on, in this property. Um, we're requesting front, um, front yard relief solely to make the, um, wider front porch. Uh, the actual front first side of the house will not project any further than the existing house. And then also, um, a couple of egress rooms in the rear as well. Um, we're expanding the existing structure by eight hundred seventy-seven square feet.
So are you actually tearing down the house and rebuilding?
No, we're not, uh, tearing it down. The actual, existing house is actually, uh, pretty solidly built. It has a fairly solid foundation, which we can work, work with, and, um, framing and, uh, first floor framing.
So.
The idea is just to rip the roof off, do a new roof that has, uh, with a half wall and, um, a, um, deep roof pitch and, uh, dormers. Doghouse dormers on the front and, uh, shed dormer on the rear.
So, uh, can you go back to your plans? Because your basement plan is different than our basement, the one we've shown here. Which one is, are there two bedrooms in the basement or three?
There are two.
Two, so that other room down there is storage or something?
Yeah.
Okay. And is it now a three-bedroom house?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not, well, the septic will be triggered.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're doing, I think, um, like, we're doing a six-bedroom system. We haven't, uh, finalized the, the septic, but it's whatever, you know.
And that's going.
Because I think the, um, the health department won't count the, the basement as a bedroom.
Right.
Anything that looks like a bedroom, even if it has each other requirements for the bedroom.
So that's gonna go on the south?
Yeah.
Yard of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
We're, uh, moving the driveway to the other side of the property, and that is because we don't really have a rear yard here, we want to have a nice, compromising by that, by having a nice side yard. So the rear yard goes to the, um, side of the property. It's well screened from the neighbor by those very high, um, breed giant, I guess, the breed giants, which came up in the previous, um, application for, for that neighbor and their, their swimming pool. But the swimming pool, one of these, excuse me, the driveway will go on that side, will extend all length to rear of the property to get, uh, parking in.
The other question that I had was, um, I noticed in, on the survey, in the proposed building coverage, it's, it's at twenty-two point one, which is, which wasn't noticed. And then it confusingly says shed to be removed. Has the shed been removed from the one thousand fifty-four square feet for?
Yes, so the shed is being removed.
No, no, I know it's being removed, but on the survey, has it already been removed from the proposed?
No, it hasn't been removed yet, it's proposed to remove it.
Right, but the proposed number, uh, what I'm asking is, is the proposed number on the survey showing the removal of the shed. I'm assuming it is, because then we're over allowable building coverage.
Yes.
But it wasn't noticed for that. Correct? I don't see any. Did? It's all about setbacks. The other question while you're thinking about that is, down at the bottom, it says existing for the rear yard coverage, it says, um, let's see. The existing coverage is thirty point three. And then it says, but that would then be minus the shed?
Yes, so the, the shed, the removal of the shed is, I think, what's contributing to the drop of the rear yard coverage.
But they don't actually tell us what the rear yard coverage is, right?
Yeah.
It's missing.
There's no before and after.
There's no before and after on the rear yard coverage, which makes it confusing.
Saying, uh, existing rear yard coverage is three ninety-six square feet, and then, um, shed and patio to be removed, and then the proposed coverage being one hundred fifty-seven square feet, which is, includes a part of the addition and the window wells.
So we need that calculation, right?
Yeah, well, we don't, well, it doesn't really say, but the, the ramp and sh, what? Because up above it says that the shed is one twenty-five. I don't know where the, where, oh, I guess the ramp is very small.
Thirty-six.
Yeah. But that doesn't come out to one fifty-seven. Right? We start with three ninety-six and then you take away one twenty-five, end up with two seventy-one. And then maybe there's more because of the. The numbers don't.
I think, uh, I think that the one twenty, I think that that is just, I am speaking for the surveyor here, but I think that, um, the shed is one hundred thirty-six square feet, and then I think there's additional square footage and spitting out with the patio.
Right, and the walkway, there's a ramp and there's a walkway.
But walks don't count.
Solid surface, if it's greater than four feet, it'll count.
But those don't look like they're wider than four feet here.
They're just, they're just walks. That's, there's, uh, some vagueness to the survey.
Yeah, could you have them, I think we'll need to, reckless, we'll need to have them clean this up a bit. Because at the moment, you need building coverage variance. I mean, according to this. And we didn't notice for it.
So we need to know if you need a rear yard block coverage variance as well.
Okay.
Which wasn't.
So anyway, those were just, aside from other things, those were just two sort of, um, basic things that I noticed. I don't know, did any of the board members have any, uh, questions?
I don't have questions, I have concerns.
Right.
Well, going beyond the fifty percent rule, you know, one of the things that we have been trying to watch in Sag Harbor is a characteristic of the, our communities, that there are a range of sizes in houses, from very small houses to very large houses. And one of the, our mandates is to maintain that. And of course, what's happening, uh, for quite a while is that everyone wants a bigger house than the one that they've bought. So I'd like to discuss and entertain some ways to, uh, make this house smaller. I have some suggestions, but we can, I can talk about them now or later. For one, now, for instance, the extension on the back of the house, I would suggest that it not extend beyond, uh, the existing, let's call it a stoop that's out there. So extend the house but square it off with the stoop, not extending another four feet, whatever it is. Doesn't say on here specifically what the dimension is, but I'm talking about this dimension here.
Oh, uh-huh.
Better bring the whole house out to here, bring it to here. And that would reduce, uh, uh, the percentage beyond the fifty percent allowance and also, uh, reduce the pyramid variance probably.
It's just getting very close to the rear, I mean, it's getting very close to the rear property line.
It's close as it is not.
Yes, yes.
So that would be my suggestion.
And Tim, you okay with the porch that goes all the way across, but the same depth?
On the front?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it does add, um, I know that the pyramid sort of being on the street side is probably a better place for the violation, but it does, it is very, very close to the street, so it's literally on the street pyramid violation. No, Val.
Well, I think that the pyramid violation for the porch is, is volume-wise, is pretty.
No, no, not the porch, I'm talking about the, you know, the dormers and those, those sorts of things. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Alex, you have any comments?
Well, my main comment was the same as Tim's, that I was concerned about the, you know, increasing the size beyond the fifty percent. And I think the Tim's suggestion is just.
Pam, do you have any?
I, I mean, we have been indicating that less is more, and effectively, you're trying to squeeze everything in and to make it much larger than is necessary.
Well, I think that, um, I mean, to put it in perspective, the existing house is seven hundred fifty square feet. We're going up to sixteen hundred square feet, which I don't think would be, you know, a new structure on this property could technically be twenty-five hundred square feet. So that's a.
Well, you, you, you almost did a hundred percent, the, the proposed structure is sixteen hundred.
Right.
And you started with seven thirty-five, and you're proposing eight hundred and seventy-seven more.
How do you get the twenty-five hundred?
Well, that's the allowable, because everything under, everything under, um.
Technically, any.
Six thousand is.
And you can.
Okay, six thousand five hundred?
I mean, in reality, other things like block coverage and setbacks come into play as well, but technically, the GFA is twenty-five hundred, you can do without.
Yeah, and you made, you mentioned about, uh, non-historical, is it or isn't it?
It is not contributing non-historical. It was probably built in maybe circa nineteen sixty or so.
It's listed in the book as non-contributing.
I should just add, because I've forgotten that part. I was concerned about the beyond fifty depth, but what I saw with the total new size would be, you know, an existing size of seven thirty-five is awfully small. And so I'm somewhat sympathetic with giving them the ability to grow the size of the house, because that's a very, very small house. And I didn't know that twenty-five hundred is what potentially is, is, is allowed.
Well, you'd need, it would need other variances. It's not allowed twenty-five hundred per se. Just, just, just gross floor area, but other coverage, pyramid, et cetera.
So, Tim, do you have any idea from your proposed change, how many square feet that that would shave off roughly?
I don't know.
It would put them under the, um, proposed, well, it would put them under the proposed coverage problem, because they're, they're gonna need a variance for building coverage, just building coverage. I mean, I think that Tim's suggestion is good to look at some ways to shave some, some off the, the rear of the house just to make it not quite so.
I mean, the fifty percent rule is there for a reason, even if it's a very small house. I don't think we can just throw it out the window. The proper way would be to go back to the trustees and change the code. There are a number of very small houses that for modern living, they may not be suitable, but I don't think one at a time, the zoning board is the place to do that, especially if you're doubling it. Just go back and figure out a way that, uh, to change the code. It's only five trustees need to vote and you've changed the code.
Well, I, I would, I would prefer not.
No, I would, rather than, than a zoning, an unelected zoning board, just ignore that part of the code and allow it to be doubled.
We're not ignoring that part of the code, though. We're here to enforce that code, and that is.
That's what I'm saying.
It's an essential code in terms of preservation of, uh, the character of this historic district, whether or not the house is contributing, and that code should stick. All this to say, we can help you possibly reduce your request here. Um, in looking at the front from, if I would expand on what Mr. McBlire just presented to you, uh, you could change the roof pitch on this, and what that would do would decrease your request, uh, for pyramid in the front yard. Your dormer height, if you look at the side elevation, uh, the sill on those two doghouse dormers is actually, uh, about halfway, it's at the check rail, the window on the gate line. So if that roof went down, those dormers would lower, and those windows would actually be usable, rather than a window sill four feet off of floor, maybe four or five feet, or fifty, I can't scale. Uh, that, uh, would satisfy one of our goals, is to help you minimize the request if it's possible. And I think we have good suggestions here, uh, to do that. Um, I would just also add that, it's a very narrow street, and it just seems to me that adding more volume on the street, so close to the street, isn't really a good thing. And I think that lowering that would be helpful. Yeah, these are, these would come down.
Your dormer windows facing the street are upside down. If the roof could pull down, as the roof comes down, these windows, it reduces, A, your sky plane request.
it reduces, A, your skyplane request, and the massing of the house will present itself a bit differently, it's a very tiny parcel, and I think it'd be more appropriate for this lot if it could reduce in that manner, just with the change of pitch. In terms of the back, one story, it meets code, I don't particularly have an issue with that, although we're talking about size, volume metrics is more important, I feel, from the street and what's happening behind the house. Does anyone else, Damon, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, nothing to add, but my only issue is, is the rear of the house, everything else is, you know, is, is acceptable. Of course, you know, bringing the, the skyplane down to, you know, like below 1,000 or so. But it's, it's the rear of the house, and I agree with Tim, if we, if we align the, the addition with the existing back of the house, then I think that would be preferable, but may not be what the, you know, the applicants really want.
Great, any other questions or comments from the board? Is there any from, one from the public to speak to 19 William Street? Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Do you have any questions or anything to add, and we'll adjourn this, we need to straighten out the survey based stuff.
If we do, I mean, I'll have to confirm the whole, and see what direction you want to go on this, but if it winds up being less if we, we assume if we come underneath the, the building coverage, we might, we don't have to renotice, we don't have to renotice, we still need the, the building.
Right, or in rear, at rear yard lot, right, yeah, otherwise you wouldn't, if you're coming down a little bit, you don't need to renotice, no, that's correct. I guess the main thing is that the board is willing, it's just a little bit, we understand it's a very tiny house. But we also don't want all the tiny houses to become twice as big as they are, so. So could I have a motion to adjourn 19 William Street to the 19 November meeting? Seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Sure, sure. So next on the agenda is 18 Ryson Street, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for 18 Ryson Street?
Make a motion to open.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Are you all ready? Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
And the number of the 68 Union Street, Sec Harbor.
Can you raise your right hand? Pardon me? We did. Did you get that? Do you want me to do it again? I don't remember. We can do it again.
I did.
You did, Tim, and Tim and Alex. Right, sorry, I, did you finish your name and address for the record? I'm sorry, okay, great, can you? No, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, perfect, you may proceed.
All right, so, okay, so this is 18 Ryson Street. The house is a approximately 1800 square feet, it was in the historic district, this house is contributing. There is, the historic part of the house is facing Union Street, and the rear, on the rear of the house is a one and a half story addition and a dormer. So our proposal here is to really, we're not changing the footprint of the house whatsoever. What we're really proposing to do here is just take this existing nonhistoric rear facade, do a new roof pitch here, so the roof pitch is actually going to be the same plate height, it comes up a little bit more steeply than it does now. So ridge will go up approximately two feet. The existing dormer off the, to the north here, that will also get rebuilt, once again, it will just go off about a foot, so. It's not much, but it makes a huge amount of different, difference in terms of the usable headroom in that room in the back. Then we are also proposing a bump out on over the, there's a little one-story bump out here, that's the kitchen on the rear of the house, so we're proposing to bump out over part of that. And that adds some additional volume for pyramid. We're only increasing the GFA of this by 90 square feet, so it's not a big expansion of the house through a displant ground, the wood lines may be, I think, second floor more useful. A few things here that I think are maybe not really so pertinent for this board, but I, you know, according to the architectural review board, but we are going to try to kind of work on dressing up the front facade a bit, which has been kind of altered over time, the original front door, trim and all that has been removed, the original windows removed, so we're going to try to bring that back to kind of what it originally looked like. The house is, it's technically in a flood zone, but we're actually high enough here that if you don't have any FEMA issues, we're, we're more than FEMA wants to do. So we don't have to worry about that.
Hey, could you just, on the elevations, just, if you could just run through where the profile of the existing house, maybe on the.
Okay, I'm not sure how well you can see it, but there's a little dash on, on the elevations, that's the existing group pitch.
Okay, okay.
You can see it, it's coming up a little bit, you know, I should add, this little, this bump out here on the side is also, you know.
No, right.
But, you know, the existing group pitch is just slightly making that a little bit steeper, a little bit more volume to the dormer that's facing north to the water, and then adding this for the existing one-story kitchen. I would say.
So it does change the let's see here. It's only changing the profile back here, right? In this area. So that profile is the, the right-hand side at the top. This is that, right, but this is the other side. So it's all behind the, the main gable.
Yes.
To the right of the.
Yeah, okay, the other way to look at it, this is the main existing gable, everything that's going on is going on on the second floor.
Behind.
Behind that main gable, yes, exactly. As is that, no changes to the footprint here.
Right. And no changes to the existing main roof?
No.
Do any.
That little dormer in the front is existing.
Right, do any of the board members have questions?
Do we have any letters or?
Yes, there was a letter.
I believe we had a letter from this current colleague who's a neighbor behind this and would be the most impacted by the, what we're doing, and he actually likes the new facade, so.
Yeah.
Hideous. 90s windows back there.
It was a.
I have a question, has the garage already been converted from a garage to living space?
No, garage, it's right now, it hasn't, it's not being used.
And that doesn't require anything from the, the zoning board?
We're not proposing any changes to that, we can sort of toy with the idea of maybe using it as an ADU, because it is, does meet the qualifications for that.
Well, I just asked because on the plans, it's clearly been converted to an apartment.
Yeah, but that's just.
That's not going to be part of this.
Not part of this application.
So you'll come back later?
Yeah, if we need, I'm not sure that we would even need a, maybe a parking variance if we did that, but it meets the criteria, criteria for a GFA, right?
Not, not unless it's an apartment, if, if that building is not on the apartment application in terms of an accessory use, it's gonna, secondary structure will count towards primary GFA unless it's applied for as an apartment.
Right.
So what is the use right now? It shows bedrooms and finished furniture inside.
It's empty.
Okay.
It's not being used.
But the plan is confusing the board here, because we're looking at a finished apartment. Not a garage, there's no car in it. It reads as a finished space.
Okay.
So if it gets converted, it needs to come back to the zoning board or?
If it needs variances.
Okay.
I need to go to the building apartment separately.
The plan should show a car in it, if that's what it's being used for.
But there's nothing in the code that the zoning.
Or don't show, we don't.
That refers to secondary living spaces on the same property.
The secondary living space on the property will count towards the primary GFA for the property. Unless it's under the accessory apartment law.
But you would need approvals for that, you can't just put it on a plan and then have to approve it.
Yeah. But we don't really even need the garage floor plan, because it's existing, you're not doing anything with it.
I'm a little sensitive to it, because there's another property on this street that the garage was turned into a living space. Without any permissions at all, it was supposed to be a garage and it's a living, clearly a living space. And as it's actually being used. So we provided a variance for that property to increase the this, the height of the ceiling and turn it into a much bigger garage, so that the owner could store his collectible car there. And in fact, it's an apartment, it was never, a collectible car was never put there. So I have a little heightened sensitivity when I see the plan here, if it doesn't need anything beyond a GFA allowance, but I would hate to come back and find out that there's somebody living there six months or a year later. So perhaps if we favor all the rest of it, we can write into the decision something specific.
Well, but there's no.
An apartment has not been provided for.
No, but there's no, it, it should just, the plan should be.
It's in the plan, we're looking, it's hard to ignore it.
No, 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 the, the plan should be modified to remove it.
The plans with that garage showing it in its current state, just so there's no confusion. We do decide to go ahead with the garage conversion in the future, and if we need variances, we'll come back.
Thank you very much.
Normally, though, you don't need to show that building if there's nothing happening to it, it's not part of your application, it's just a garage on the property, it's an accessory.
Design drawings get mixed into the actual application package.
Yes.
Yeah.
So any other comments or questions about the, the, the proposed renovation? Do, wanted to know, new dormer, peak roof dormer, additional on the side. If that were a shed roof, is it a equal pyramid request?
It would be about the same, because we would have to raise the plate height to make that work. In other words, we're achieving the, we're achieving usable height in this, in the center, whereas we kind of just
Right.
Right, used it as a flattened it out, we would lose that ability to use the other part of it, because the plate height would be under six feet. Once again, this is probably a very, it's, it's the least visible part of the building, in fact, the building next door, which we were just referencing, that two-story accessory building is like directly opposite of this, so it's really not something that you see. Even the neighbors would think, because their own building is blocking it.
I brought that up because it's a contributing home, and the shed roof dormers were pleasing to this house versus two competing dormers on the bottom right of the drawing, you've got the historic house, and then this dormer where on the top elevation, top right, the shed roof dormer looks more complimentary to the building, and it is historic. That's why I wanted that point, but that's my only comment.
I mean, and I think that, I mean, given that this is an important historic structure, I'm going to be having some discussion with this, with the architectural review board when we get there, so. But, you know, as far as volumetric things, that's kind of what we're would like to at least have something to start with.
Right, on the bottom left elevation, you see how that dormer sticks out with the ridge line. And that's where I'm seeing more volume, whereas if it were a shed roof, it presents with less volume, less mass, and it's more in keeping with the character of the house. And I would encourage, if it were possible to do that, that would be a better pathway in moving forward with the design. I also, I just, to piggyback on top of that, I agree with Val, I also think that that happens to be the area where you're only five feet from the property line. So if it was a shed dormer, it would have less volume, five feet from the property line. And I know the existing house is where it is, but the existing house is 3.9 feet from the property line, so we're talking about something you know, very, very close to the property line, so I think anything over there to minimize the mass in that area would be a good thing to do. Anybody else have any other comments? Alex, do you have anything?
Nope.
Pam?
No, I think Val's point is well taken, and I think it should be taken, done accordingly.
Damon, do you have anything, any questions?
No questions, nothing to add.
Okay, great.
I'll just quickly say, from an architectural aesthetic standpoint, if I'm on the ARB, I might have some concerns, but from our standpoint, I'm not.
Well, I, I think that, you know, number one in our five determinations for granting variances, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, so under that, I don't think that we have to completely rely on the architectural review board for things that might be thought of as aesthetics in a historic district, if they contribute negatively to that neighborhood, then it's very much under our purview, and I don't think we have to hesitate if we feel strongly about it.
That's right, because these, these variances in terms of the volume are lending themselves to that type of addition, which might not be in character with the particular home that's being added on to. So we would be mitigating your request and doing something more in keeping with the character of that home. And I think those are good points.
Well, to that extent, then, I would say, for the record, that I think the south elevation, that extra volume that's being put on top doesn't seem to kind of fit with the character of the community.
So, right now, what I'll do is I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone here who would like to speak to nine?
18 Ryson.
18 Ryson Street? Nobody's on Zoom, anyone here? So I guess there's a little bit of hesitation here to approve this as it is, I'm thinking that you might want to go back and think about that south elevation. I think that otherwise, the board seems to feel okay with the proposal, is that a correct assessment?
Yes, from my point of view, point, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so do you think you're willing to do that with, like, you go back to your client, do a little bit redesign?
But I don't think that this is a it's going to be too significant of an issue to, to change that to a shed dormer.
Okay.
So that makes it, you know, moves us forward.
Great.
Yeah, good.
Very good, so could I? Okay, very good. So could I?
Good question there. Um, it's a procedural question. I mean, I know I'm going to be back there anyways for nineteen William Street and hopefully two oh three, uh, Madison Street next month, but, um, if this is just a new, if we just go with this, turning this into a shed dormer, do I even represent or can we just submit for a written decision?
Um, I think we would want to see it, don't you? Because it's, it's kind of a significant change.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
It would.
Right.
Yeah, I gotta give you the, uh, the design without the, um.
Yeah. So could I have a motion to adjourn eighteen Ryson Street to our, uh, November nineteenth meeting?
Go move. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. Thank you.
Uh, I'll just people in front.
Yeah.
Fourth Street.
So. Let's get ourselves. So next on the agenda is eight Liberty Street. Hi, could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, I'm Richard Hannah from the Hamilton Cameron Montauk. I was dated at eight thirty five o'clock bigger of laws at Montauk Department.
Great, and you're an attorney, correct?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, you may proceed.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I mentioned the Montauk. I was recently brought into this project through Joe Paulsy, who works with me at Light and Flame Planning. Uh, that's important enough in itself to be here tonight. I would just quite reflect this on the board. Uh, I'm not an architect, so I'll see a lot of your tech, like, professional nature, will do the best we can, including myself. There's a lot of the activity, break back for information. If you, had you looked around at zoning work, um, it's been active, and it's been several years since I've been in front of this board. This is certainly an application that has a lot of intellectual, to be honest, uh, questions, uh, to, to present. It's basically a kind of a unique application in my mind. Where? Actual house, a pretty modest cottage-type development. I don't know, typically there's pictures of it. I have a picture of this, of the streetscape, if you haven't seen it. Uh, I just wanted to see it myself, uh, based on, uh, you know, the actual house, as I mentioned, is fairly modest. It is within historic register and historic district in this neighborhood. From what I understand, the condition of the house is, the foundation and structure is unlikely, any, much of, if any, of the structure is actually a good one. It looks to have been reconstructed, added to it, over decades. It stands today as a house with an eight-foot roof, though on windows and shingled walls. You know, certainly nothing now remarkable from the streetscape, but I understand that this isn't in any way the gating, the skip, as the front door or its origins. This community character is neat, and it's at least within the realm of what this application sought to accomplish. On its face, our application is fairly modest. We have a nine hundred and three square foot residential structure, with a steep span by eight hundred and forty nine square feet total. I can drive, conducting, uh, constructing in addition to the rear of the structure, two hundred and ninety square, one square feet, a third floor and a partial second floor addition, five hundred and fifty-eight square feet, offset from the front of the structure by twelve feet. Essentially, the existing structure will remain unchanged on the streetscape until you reach the second story, about twelve feet from the property line on Liberty Street. It's also unique and not so much that, that this, uh, maybe not so much in this name, but the house sits nearly on the property line along Liberty Street. So the existing structure is not conforming to respective pyramid or sky plane violation, front yard setback, et cetera. A more typical zoning application would propose to follow the house or relocate it further back to the street, uh, in violation of these four regulations under the village code. I think that would be entirely inconsistent with the permit standards as well as its, uh, provide protection in this neighborhood. The character of the community we're trying to protect is partially including these nonconformities. In fact, I, I found your application process very helpful in finding the character of the existing house, if it allows the value of the requested variances. And from the whole of these, the existing pyramid or sky plane nonconformity to residents totals fourteen hundred and sixty-four square feet. The proposed nonconformity will increase by twelve hundred and twenty-four cubic feet. So our variance request is actually for twelve hundred, uh, twenty-four square feet of the proposed, uh, total, the fourteen sixty-four cubic feet violation already exists. The need, the notice rate is very dramatic, uh, but it aggregates all the nonconformity into a single number. We can review the general variance standards if they apply to this application briefly. They are relevant and the board is still on this board's authority. Build a grain in the neighborhood, you'll, you'll, you'll change the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties. We don't believe that this is an undesirable change or detriment. This neighborhood is a healthy mix of different homes of variance, of varying sizes. The efforts made to preserve the existing street facade and the existing structure is designed to allow this feature to remain as it is, with an addition being step back in a manner consistent with the character of the neighborhood. At least in my, from my perspective, it's still a global work. You generally don't want to create colonial Williamsburg. You want to have a clear differentiation between the structure that's in the historic district and, any changes out to the neighborhood. So I think that is, at least it's the plans that are in front of the board right now. Could it will often work in discussions with the architectural people, uh, ones that like for that. Uh, whether, whether they can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variances. They are most likely conforming to local limitations, but this, uh, additions of the rear of the house. The design was done to incorporate these fifteen-four band plan and portions of the structure to retain the historic appearance of the property and the structure. Efforts stated to protect historic structures recognize that allowing for consistent additions to them, in terms of the gap to reduce, uh, or maybe, it's the value of these structures of something that will provide protections in the future. We're also using the rear yard and business to upgrade these sanddirt system to be able to find a house of value that is perfect. And we make buildings instead of, much more.
Right.
Do you have the variance request substantial? Basically, the existing nonconformity of the variance, it's hard to say, but request of variance is substantial. That's still the goal of the zoning board at the beginning of the day, but they are generated by efforts to incorporate this space and make a usable addition to the premises above the structure in a manner that is architecturally sound. This is small house on modest property. I think our plan is consistent with full limitations. Maybe a minus half on modest property, uh, at the end of construction. Random variance have adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions. Really, we don't have any weapons. Uh, it's not an environmentally constrained area. No natural features will be affected. Uh, the sanddirt system will in fact be upgraded to one, uh, which is an overall benefit to the village of Sag Harbor and its important, uh, uh, watershed. Is this difficult to be self-created? Well, it is. This is self-created. I created by a nonconformity of the structure and zoning rules that didn't exist when it was first constructed. I would submit the variances and read the balancing test of the variance of benefits of the act. Can I waste that term? Uh, I'm aware of other variances, bringing up this priority in the neighborhoods. It's just, yeah. More for people to say, that was, uh, relevant on the neighborhood. Uh, I think that far exceeds the outputs of our application in these ways. Uh, I do think they tried to work with the existing structure and come with a reasonable application for review. Uh, I ask the board to provide a useful and, and the feedback. If there are concerns, we're happy to discuss them with you or seek any closing. For consideration of future continuation of, uh, I also want to point out that two C E owners are here with me tonight, Anthony and Michael are sitting behind me as well.
Great, thank you. Um, just a couple of things, um, just start off with, um, have you been to the architectural review board as a discussion item for this project?
No.
Okay, so, um, because it is a contributing structure to the historic district, we would recommend that you do that initially, um, and also we'd like a, probably a report from the historic preservation consultant to the board on the house and what he deems its historic, character at this point. I, it is a contributing structure in our, um, in the, in the district, and it also says that there's a contributing, a contributing privy on the property, which I know that you've designated to be removed. So if that's actually construct, a contributing accessory structure, you wouldn't be able to remove that. So, uh, those are just a couple of, um, things to start with. I don't know if, um.
I would.
Dan, you have some additional?
Add to your comments, Mr. Chairman, that the application has come before this board as it stands, and we have the wherewithal to provide you with meaningful feedback. Um, although it is encouraged to bring your project to the Board of Historic Preservation prior, um, I feel that we can comment on this, um, and if you'd like to.
Sure.
End that or?
Yep, no, sure.
No, I'm going to check again. Uh, essentially, you had mentioned in your opening statements that the house would remain somewhat unchanged. Um, I had difficulty actually finding the existing home, which has been enveloped by these additions to the point where you really have to study these exterior elevations to say, where's the historic house on this? Um, standards are such that when you do an addition to a historic home, that you don't damage its significance in terms of overwhelming this little cottage. There should be some sort of distinction. And this addition, um, you said there were consistent additions. I find that this has metamorphosized this house to a degree where the historic part is not standing on its own. It's been, there's a melding of all these various shapes. Um, and it's made it unrecognizable. Uh, it is a tight lot. You are nearly on the lot line. That's a self-created hardship in terms of these additions onto the back of the home. It's a very tiny property. It's a diminutive scale house and these are significant additions to it, albeit it is a small home.
I think I did, the reason I thought this was helpful is you can see that's the line ingrained from the front elevation. You see the winner of the fenestration, everything is consistent, exactly. That is the winner as well.
Right, um, but when you go to the architectural review board and have a discussion, uh, as a discussion item with them, one of the main things that they do talk about is that they don't want additions to overwhelm the existing structure, which is basically what happens here. They very often don't like things to go above the, the, the main roof ridge. And you've got a full second floor above it in the rear, um, and that, that may be acceptable. I don't know. I mean, you'd have, aesthetically for them, but they're probably going to want some kind of a separation between the, the old existing house and the, the new structure. I mean, we're speaking to things that we, you know, we really need to discuss with the architectural review board.
Be separated via all, you know, some.
Right.
Secondary structure. You know, I, I think the architect did consider that, but it, it's one of those that didn't.
Right, but that may be, that may be the direction that they push you in. I don't know. Uh, all I'm saying is that it's, it's, uh, often a very good idea to go to them with your initial concept first. And then in addition to that, the, um, the historic consultant would provide a report that would describe what the, you know, the important characteristics of the existing historic structure are, and if they still remain. Uh, any other comments?
Well, I concur. That's a, uh, well, the difficulty on that street, Liberty Street, is such a narrow street and taking into consideration all the homes. I think it's important that we recognize the characteristics and the importance of Liberty Street in the historical area. And I think that, uh, the back of the house is just, uh, to some degree overwhelming, and I think it needs to be re-visit. Come up with some more, uh, plans that are, that are concerning the neighborhood and the size of the lot that you have. Less is more.
When you go down the street, you, you're struck by how small the scale of the buildings are on that street. Um, and that's part of the character of that street. And especially since this house in particular is so close to the property line and the, uh, the street line. Alex, do you have anything?
Well, the substantial relief granted to twenty-five Liberty, I, I don't know the history of that, but that's from two thousand and two, like it was.
Right.
And now they hear, and as a practitioner, I practice in the front porch, which usually run it before similar ones in the road, and so either that's a repairing, uh, that was created a lot of door or something that was created and, and, you know, like, something to retrieve from, like, I don't know.
As I recall though, that there were, that house was larger a, and on a larger property.
Much larger property.
Yeah.
You know, proportionate to the house in relation to the scale of that lot is, uh, it feels more appropriate for the site and, um, there was a distinction with the addition put onto the home in terms of the importance of that fifty percent expansion that the existing house, the character, the history of that house was unharmed. Um, when these homes age, it's only a reasonable expectation to put a new roof on, put new windows on, put new siding, and that still does not change the historic designation of the home. It's just home improvement. Whether or not that occurred before these boards existed remains to be seen, but we have a regulation in place now to preserve that character. And I find that, again, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, this addition, if you look at the bottom right and top right of these drawings, that is really overwhelming the, uh, historic structure. Um, as an architect, I've looked at this to see if I could help you as an applicant to possibly design within the framework of the pyramid, and it is conceivable to do that. Um, you know, I, I think that that could use a revisit in terms of this is in an ambitious application, albeit a small house. That's my comment.
Uh, as I recall, the initial plan was to try to make the historical house a secondary house. And that, and that became a, a major issue.
Yes.
You cannot take an historical house and make it a secondary house. So with the, the lot, and so that house was basically placed in, as an addition, not as an addition, but concomitant with the existing house.
Right.
Um, the importance of the fifty percent rule is also to avoid an increase which would change the historic significance of that home because it would lose, um, its character to a degree where you might not, it might not qualify anymore, and, um, that's something to be considered and the A R B drives that, but we also work as a board to help shape these applications in a more pleasing manner. And, uh, I think that perhaps a visit to that board, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, would be your next step.
Certainly can't disagree with anything you're saying, and I think there are opportunities for us to revise this, uh, further according. In terms of square footage, it's not a, you know, getting close to maxing out in seventeen hundred square feet, it's a proposal. Uh, and not very for you, whatever the split for the piece of, side with the digits. In terms of square footage, a, uh, a, you know, an aggressive push beyond, you know, the boundaries of the property. I think, yeah, it was more of a location issue.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you look at the, you know, the proposed coverages, they're, you know, they're all, and the G F A is all very reasonable. It's more, it has more to do with massing here, uh. And then, um, I know that you were noticed for, um, two thousand six hundred eighty-eight cubic feet of pyramid violation, but it's really only one thousand two hundred twenty-four, isn't it?
That's correct.
So it's, that's maybe a confusion there. I mean, it makes it sound much worse.
Exactly.
But it's really the, the new period, pyramid violation, well.
This is total and the.
Right, that's total of existing.
Existing and proposed.
Proposed, so that's not really what the, what it would be noticed for. It would, it's really one thousand two hundred twenty-four cubic feet.
Right.
New violation.
Yeah, we do take into consideration the aggregate.
Yeah, we do take into consideration the aggregate total. Uh, to see if there's an existing which is being exacerbated to a point where it seems a little over ambitious. But, uh, the twelve twenty-four is what it should have been noticed for.
Um, any other comments from the board?
Uh, cause I haven't spoken yet, I would just echo some of the things that Ham said. Um, looking at this letter from the Eastville Community Historical Society, it does seem that this house and this street is particularly historical. Uh, for this village of Sag Harbor, and I agree and concur with the chairman's comments that the original structure and volume is overwhelmed by the proposed additions. And so if there's a creative way to curb their ambitions a little bit, I think that would be helpful.
Damon, do you have anything to add?
Oh, that's, it's been well said, I won't, I won't repeat it.
Great, um, do you wanna make any more comments or I'll open up to the public for their comments and then, okay?
I think there were some letters, I did review them.
Right.
Taking their aim as to, who requested, they were in general, but I did want to get a favor of the. Opponents or, or other common.
Great, thank you.
Very much.
Great, so, um, I'm assuming there are members of the public that would like to speak to this application, eight Liberty Street? Do you come forward to the podium? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name's Michael Doye, I live at number twelve Liberty Street, addressed to this property.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Um, it's half a year round residence, we've been there three and a half years, a single story. And, um, I'm, I'd like to express my concern that magnitude of the, the, uh, increase in height particularly, is going to severely impact available light. Um, if I may, I was looking at it a few years before I came to the meeting, and the sun was barely above the existing ridge line on the east-west elevation. And I think, um, I, I haven't looked at the measurements before, I started not that good. But, um, I, I believe it's almost a fifty percent increase in height. Um, which I think is still a negative impact, not only my problem, but that you expressed concern about the impact on the, uh, story history. And, um, furthermore, uh, the balcony, uh, maybe called, we call it balcony, but on the, um, of northern, uh, uh, elevations, which are almost, was probably fourteen feet. Separates the wall, the north wall of my house from the south wall of this, uh, house. So the balcony is standing outward, I think, um, not too far, if possible. Um, that's, you know, the last, actually.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to eight Liberty Street? Great, thank you, could you state your name and address for the record?
Samantha William, I live at one forty-seven Hampton Street.
Great, you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, as I said, I'm Samantha William, I live at one forty-seven Hampton Street, which is on the other side of, um, Mr. Williams. I just wanna thank you to me to express my concerns regarding my neighbor's application, but a proposed expansion of their residence. As a property owner, I can be directly affected by the variance request, I just have a few key points. First would be the impact of neighborhood hands, character and historical integrity. The request to expand the existing non-conforming residence by approximately ninety-four percent raises significant concerns about the overall character of the neighborhood, which is recognized for its historical significance, with many homes including the original residents in question dating back to the eighteen hundreds. This proposed expansion exceeds the fifty percent threshold, looking to set a precedent for future developments that may further compromise unique aesthetic and spatial dynamics of our community. The character and charm of our neighborhood depend on preserving the unique architectural heritage that binds it. Allowing expansion that may be significantly from the established zoning standards risks undermining historical integrity. I urge the board to consider how the variance may not affect just my property, but the neighborhood's whole. My petty concern involves setbacks and personal concerns. There's a request for a twelve-foot western front stepback or a twenty-foot stepback is required. This raises a significant concern for me, annoying. This reduction does not bring the residence much further from the, um, significantly impacting my privacy. The proximity of the expansion will also create a imposing presence that diminishes the openness and the feeling of space around my home. It's crucial considering how the changes are driving the path of my living and my quality of life. Additionally, I am concerned about the logistics of construction and heavy machinery, and although access to property without the poaching on the back line itself. It's crucial that any construction activities are conducted responsibly to avoid potential damage or disruptions by property. In summary, while I understand the desire for the homeowner to expand about this, I urge the board considering historical context of the neighborhood and the specific impacts of local and various issues that will happen. I believe that preserving our community's character and ensuring the individual property perspective should be of priority. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to eight Liberty Street?
Good evening, George K. Mirti, Executive Director, Eastville Community Historical Society, one thirty-nine Hampton Street.
Great, can you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I promise to tell the truth.
Great, thank you.
Um, so thank you, first of all, for hearing, um, your concern and care for the historic Eastville community. I really felt glad that the statements that I heard were actually put into the record, because we're Eastville Community Historical Society, we had a fight to be included in a historic district. Originally, it stopped at, uh, Eastville Avenue, because it won't speculate, but it did. And the elders of the community came together, um, and we do have Michael Butler here, who's now, and wasn't on back then, but he sees him now, with us, who is, lives right on Eastville Avenue and a part of Eastville Community Historical Society. We are here to oppose this application, we feel that we will be displaced while we're in place. Uh, there was a lot of mention to twenty-five Liberty, which we fought vehemently, as you know. Um, and we felt, um, that that would try to set a precedence to dismantle the historic district that we fought for, because it doesn't look like some of the other architectural, highly architectural houses. And so there is more importance than just the, uh, aesthetics of traditional architectural renderings, but also the cultural aspect to the community. And with that being said, we feel that this is overwhelming, we feel that we, and my neighbors here specifically, who spoke and those who are not able to be here today, because, uh, I included, um, Carrie, that, um, Michael Martin Butler was not noticed, he did not. Not aware of this, also, Power Brown is not aware of this, and I've called with those emails. We all try to keep our historic district as clean as possible. We follow rules, we make sure that we are, uh, compliant with zoning forms and the ARB laws. And for us, this would be detrimental for us, this is the Crippen House, it has a very historic presence as far as the Crippen, um, the such, the Shinnepot and Montaquet, the wards, uh, and many other people who live in the house, including, you know, more recently, B. Smith, you know, rented the house here before she built that house and before she passed on. The history and legacy of that house is so important, and I'm kicking myself, because time is not always on your side. Had I known that, uh, this house would have been bought to be, uh, basically, uh, distorted in such a way, I did reach out very quickly to Community Preservation Fund of East Hampton, and they would have purchased this house for Eastville had we known that this is what will be proposed to it. Um, after twenty-five Eastville, we said never again, uh, and we hope that you will hear our cry and our plea to, uh, deny this application, we will follow up with ARB. I know that you have received notice from, uh, Sarah Calz, who was now the Director of the South Hampton Historical Museum. Also, um, from April Gornet, Renee Simons, myself, and as I said, uh, there are four more letters coming, if you can hold this public hearing. Um, openly, Martin A. Butler and Gloria Brown are opposed to this as well, and I did promise to tell the truth, so I am telling the truth about that. So you will receive letters from them, they are opposed to it, but I just thank you for, uh, taking the seriousness of this historic district, uh, into consideration and putting it in the record, because there's consecutive eight houses, they all are historic, this is the most continuous historic side of the block now, since we now have the block of twenty-five, uh, Liberty, but please take that into consideration. And, uh, one of the things that I do agree with, with the attorney said is, no, we don't want, um, we don't want, uh, a community that's built to replicate something that was old, that's not preservation by standards, and I would know. I'm the Vice President of the Preservation League of New York State, so I understand preservation, I understand smart growth, and we are willing to do that. I made that known several times to Nancy, the realtor, and anyone that came to visit that house, I told them, we are friendly neighbors, let's sit down and talk, and if there needs to be changes, we would love to be included in that. We were not, and so we are here in the nicest manner that we could be, but to oppose this application, and we actually did do the same. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you. Uh, anyone else to speak to eight Liberty Street? Hi, could you state your name and address for the record?
Anthony, I'm, uh, sixteen Cedar Ridge Drive, East Hampton, New York.
Great, can you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Great, thank you.
I am the owner.
Okay.
He's Liberty Street. Um, I guess just a couple of things, just to make things clear, because I, you're rightfully so, there's a lot of concern and, um, our goal here is to retain the character of this house and neighborhood. I lived in the town of East Hampton for twenty-five years. I love the character of Sag Harbor, it's not, there's really nothing else like it, in terms of preservation, um, and that's our goal. Right, the, um, you know, at the same time, when we purchased this house, which I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate, this house was falling apart. Right, I'm, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the block, I'm sure you're familiar with the house. So, uh, I think anything that's done to this house, obviously, within conformity of, of, of the, of the neighborhood, is gonna be an improvement. And so I just wanna just make it clear that, you know, what we're trying to achieve here is something that's within the character of the neighborhood. I, I, I think the, the drawings are a bit distorted in the sense that, um, you know, we're, we're not looking to block out sunlight from our neighbors, right, the house to our immediate right on Hampton Street is already a two-story house. It is a second story. Um, and we'll go back to the drawing board here and try to work within the pyramid as much as possible to get, you know, to get a house that's, that's liberal, right? Right now, the house is nine hundred square feet, we're just looking to expand it a bit. Um, we'll go back, I didn't appreciate the fact that we should have started with the historic, is that the?
Well, the architecture, yes, yeah, the architecture.
I was told that we could try to get a variance first.
Well.
I mean, they can't approve anything in final form without it getting variance first, so that's.
No, but there's, they, they have a component called a discussion item, so that you, you go on there and they review it as a discussion item to get, give you feedback about the character of the, the house.
Could I just add something? We suggest that when we look at a drawing and we think that when it gets to the Architecture Review Board, they're gonna throw it out. So rather than us spending a month or two and trying to have you make small changes to the things that are affected by the code, reduce all this or whatever, if the whole plan is gonna have to be redone, why not do what we call a walk-on, you won't get a decision from the Architecture Review Board, but they'll give an indication whether this is even in the realm of what they would approve, so we're trying to like, save you time, cause you'll have to come back two or three more times with this. And yet, the whole thing, if, if we look at it, we think, you know, we don't think that they're gonna like anything about this, so get that feedback, and then when you get something that looks like it's gonna be approved aesthetically and historically, then come back to fine-tune any details that need variances from the code, that's, that's what's behind this.
I understand, okay.
Technically, the way that it works is, yes, you do need to get your variances first, and then you go to the Architecture Review Board for their decision. But because they have this discussion item available, that's usually the best venue to deal with a, a project like this.
Right, and, and this structure, I don't know if you're aware of it, but to me, I believe the only original portion of the structure of the front two rooms of that house, everything else appears to be headed on.
Right, so there, there's also, um, a historic preservation consultant to the board, which will go visit the house, and he will do a, a report that he'll present to the board and we'll have access to also, which will then determine what actually is old and what isn't old, um, so that's also an important first step. Um, because it sort of gives us a basis for where we move on from.
Shake that, and as I said.
Cause you can't always tell, just, I mean, as a layperson, you can't always tell what is significant and isn't significant.
I think it's just to add one last thing, I mean, as a resident of the South for twenty-five years, I, I agree in the, um, I mean, objectives and needs to preserve. It's not a, an issue of structures that are left to decay.
Hmm.
Right, and we see an awful lot of that in our neighborhoods, in our areas. And so I think that also has to be taken into account, in terms of what people, what the reaction is to when people look into a free property, right?
Well, can I just say, I don't think that anybody in the room would argue with needing to repair and restore buildings that are degraded and falling apart and so on, it's just how you do it that I think is the issue here.
No, I understand, but very often I find that properties are left in a, in, in certain states of town, in East Hampton, I'm not sure much about, about the village. And there's really not much action taken in terms of the decay of a property and degrade people and not taking care of it. Which I think that maybe should be moved by.
Right, I'm the only member of this board who served on the Architectural Review Board, and I would say that the preservation matters not whether or not the home is in a state of disrepair. It has to be reconstructed in like and kind, or renovated in like and kind. Um, so a home improvement may introduce new elements and ingredients, but that has potential to do harm to the history of this home. And as Mr. McGuire had pointed out, the visit to the ARB Board, Historic Preservation Board, will give you a starting point, so when you come here, we won't be scaling down your project. As it stands now, I would be strongly opposed to what I see before us tonight, in addition to the two neighborly, um, objections. There was privacy issue with the balcony, te- technically, we don't like a situation where homeowner feels like their property has been invaded, visual trespass into the backyard. These properties are very close together, and for that reason, um, it's not encouraged, they would probably say no. Um, especially with the opposition, but the, the crux of the matter here is you've got a historic house that has been, um, obliterated in terms of you cannot find that historic house on these elevations other than the one roadside, and, uh, it's not a sensitive addition to the home, so the ARB will, uh, point these things out, but I'm just.
Understood, yeah, but I, I also have to add, I think, history and years this house has also destroyed the historic character to it.
Yeah, but there are.
Destroying that historic character, right?
There are many historic homes that are very simple, and they look like detached structures, they look like accessory structures on a large scale. And that's what's important here, particularly that this was the Crippen House. And these are, uh, I won't say national treasures, but there are local treasures, and anyone who buys a historic home has a responsibility to know, what can I do to this house in terms of preserving that history? And I think that you will find that's a common theme both between this board and the Historic Preservation Board. So, uh, we don't want to give a variance to give you free license to make radical changes to a house. And I, I find that that's, uh, we're the stopping point, and then you go to ARB. Um, however, I was still encouraged, as Mr. Chairman said, please visit them and see what they think. And just so y- you understand, we're not saying that we would be opposed to an addition or any variances to this property, it's just the, the scale of things, um, and, and the sensitivity to how it's done. So, that's, that's the, the goal here. Great, thank you.
Can I say one more thing? I think in terms of what you're trying to do, it's gonna be very challenging, because you have a small lot. And when I walked back there to that area, and the magnitude of the, of, that was you were projecting to do, I didn't find it tasteful, and I would not accept it.
When, when you say what we're trying to do, we're trying to do is improve the property. But if, if it's, maybe you can ask the board a question, if what we're trying to do is within the variance fifty percent, right, then the board has no.
If you don't.
Right, it's just on the touch of the view board in terms of.
If you don't need any variance. If you don't need any variances, then you don't need to come before this board, correct? If you, if you meet all the zoning, right? We don't have jurisdiction, and it's, then it's only the Architecture Review Board, that's correct.
I guess you're talking about in terms of these plans.
Right, yes. Great, great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Great. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Eight, one, thirty-five East Hill Avenue, Staten Harbor.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great.
I think there's a little confusion as to who was noticed on this or not. I believe a letter went out to my name, but at my brother's address. My brother's eleven Liberty Street, which faces directly across to Eight Liberty Street. I've known all the names up and down that block my whole life. The house in reference is the Johnson Ashman Crippen Home, which, of course, as you know, goes back to the my target native indigenous people here. All along that house has been lived in, full-time or part-time. The Johnson family lived there. They brought their families there. So the term, um, the explanation that it's perhaps was falling apart from the pictures I've seen, it does not seem to indicate that. I believe the two gentlemen, Michael and Anthony, also stayed there themselves with their friends or family, so. And as we know, Staten Harbor, all these little bungalows may start out with two rooms. Then they put on a little porch, a little dish in here, a little kitchenette, so in terms of what is going to be defined as historically significant, I basically think the entire structure is significant in terms of east, in Liberty Street, in East Hill neighborhood. All of those zones are small scale, except for, as we mentioned, the one which I refer to as the Bowser House on the corner of Hampton Street and Liberty Street, which again, to me, is pretty much an outlier in parts. I don't know if people have slipped through, and it came to was a specifically home. And I know at one point you wanted to feel, maybe it's been over there and had all these other grandiosities, which thankfully were scaled back. So I think to use that as some sort of a reference or a guide as to what should be done on the Johnson home is sort of misleading. And I think, again, I thank Dr. Willoughby and all the other members of the board here, and looking very seriously at this, because, again, Staten Harbor is sort of very unique in terms of significance to the village and the Eastern as a whole. And that's my statement. And again, it's going to be overwhelming. If the men we think of something in lower scale, which goes back further, maybe moving in the center we take, but I think in terms of, um, the people on the corner and Julia and, and Michael next door, it's going to overwhelm their homes. I'm sorry, it's just, there's no way getting around. It's just going to be a huge amount of this. It's going to block the sunlight, there's anything else, the winds, the breezes, that we all cherish here in Staten Harbor.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Eight Liberty Street?
Hello.
Hi. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Sarah Kautz. I'm the Executive Director at Southampton History Museum, Seventeen Meeting House Lane, Southampton, New York.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great.
We submitted an applicant, or, sorry, we submitted a, a letter of comment for the application earlier today and wanted to, uh, come and just reiterate the, the concerns of my colleagues at the Phil Historical Society, and, um, it, it, East Hill is significant in the wider scope of not just the East End, but Long Island's and New York State and the country, because it is one of the early communities of color where people of color are owning property. In a time when it was highly unusual for such people to do so, so it is an incredibly important historic place. And the buildings that retain that tie to the history are so important. And this is one of them. So in terms of historic preservation, I know it's beyond the scope of this board, but I've, in my previous work as a consultant for historic preservation and, uh, and then advocate for historic preservation, there's been a lot of, not just here in the village, but across Long Island, the use of variances to sort of push through changes in the historic district at historic properties that are just wholly inappropriate and might have never made it through the Board of Review for the historic preservation had they come to that board first. So I would really like to advocate, um, for that to happen, that anything like this in a historic district should really go through the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review first. Because, you know, this, in terms of historic preservation, is this is not an addition to a historic structure. This is a complete destruction of everything that we would say is what we're trying to accomplish. And then also the, the concerns of the district, um, as folks are saying. It's about the street. It's about the wider, uh, character of this area, that it is quirky. And you can make changes. This scale and scope is just way too much, so, because it's such an important place, and because we've seen all this incremental cumulative, you know, damage to the fabric of the historic district and historic structures nearby, I would really urge you to at least refer this to the Architectural Review Board for their recommendation before this board goes any further, even within, you know, the scope of something unreasonable, because I think the question is, is it appropriate? And that's a question for the ARB. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We can't force them to go to the Architecture Review Board, but we highly recommend that they do as a discussion item. Unfortunately, the process works technically where they have to come here first before they can get on the agenda for a, a complete review by the Architecture Review Board.
Right.
Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak to Eight Liberty Street? Could you state your name and address for the record?
Merna Davis, twenty-six Rector Street.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great.
I, I just wanted to commend with the board, because holding the line at this point, to me, it's not just the age of the building, but the scale is being destroyed, and there's still a lot to preserve, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to Eight Liberty Street?
No, there's nobody online.
And there's nobody online. Just to enter it into the record, I'll read the description of the house from the National Register of Historic Places. So the approximate date of the house is eighteen fifty, and it's described as a one-story, three-bay frame residence with one over one light wood sash windows, single, shingle wall cladding, and a gable, and a side gable roof. This cottage has a small three-light basement window in the gable and molded window trim. There is a contributing privy on the property. This house has been occupied by the same family for four generations, so there, there can be very simple things that make, um, the house historic. So, um, I'll address the applicant. Do you want us to adjourn this to the, our, our next meeting? And give you a chance to go to the Architectural Board?
That would be very helpful, and truthfully, I think that's a process that should be fundamental to this, to go to the area. Unfortunately, I wasn't contacted.
Right, sure.
Till a week or two ago. But that would have been my first stop, but I was told that, oh, you have to go with the zoning board, and it's, and it almost makes sense that you should have, have to go through that process before you come and start burning your time, but I think that would make sense for trying to get an application in for a walk-on and get some feedback that we can bring in front of the margins, but for the next time.
Great. Great, very good.
It does sound like there is some work to do, but there might be a middle ground where, you know, preserve some of the duty features that are very important, and then we also have some additional expansion to the area. I do know we're pretty close up on our building coverage on property, so having one story that extends back, it might ultimately trigger building coverage variance, which, you know, so there, there's all these competing interests that we need to kind of evaluate in terms of what the, the best solution is.
Great, all right, so, um, could I have a motion to adjourn Eight Liberty Street to the November nineteenth meeting?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So, next we have decisions. Yes. So, could I have a motion to withdraw the application for forty-one Redwood Grove and twenty-six Cove Road?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, the next decision is one seventy-four Main Street.
For members, this is an application for Staten Harbor Historical Museum, one seventy-four Main Street, to relocate and christen a two-hundred-and-sixty-two square accessory building, strengthen the interior of seventeen square foot length. The use of this as an archive building for storage of study and documents and art.
I'm your pen man.
Sit five by five, by six point seven foot bathroom connected, relocated in one of the most difficult buildings. Certain variants were required for this property. The property's comprised of one thousand one hundred and forty square feet, and one thousand was required. It's a fifty-foot wide property, we're offered to acquire. And the historical museum may disapplication and construct a new accessory structure to create and prevent the length of the museum to store its documents and projections, and therefore, all the new containers located in the art zone is required. We need granted, which can be changed, or relieved granted, as the arts funding can be determined by natural accessory structures. Since the museum represents such an important community facility, for the reasons set forth in the determination of the board hereby determining spread variance.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for one seventy-four Main Street as written?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Could we do just a quick executive session?
For legal advice?
Yes, for legal advice. Great, thank you. Great, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion if go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on one moment. I'll be right back.
All right. Can you keep me in, or do I have to get, get kicked out too?
Hold on. Yeah, we have to kick you out too.
Okay, fill me in later.